To the Bennington Select Board meeting of September 13th, 2021. I'm Jeannie Jenkins, Chair of this board, and I'd like the rest of the board to introduce themselves.
Good evening, everybody. This is Bruce Lee Clark.
Good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
I'm Jean Conner.
Hi, Tom Haley.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey.
Also with us tonight, we have Stu Hurd, our Town Manager, Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes for us, and Josh Boucher, who is taking care of CAT TV filming, which is quite wonderful. So let's begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you lead us?
The Pledge of Allegiance, the two lines of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is standing one nation, one nation, and indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. And Jean, would you read our vision statement that helps us know why we are here?
Sure. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you, Jean. All right, so first up is the consent agenda. For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Sound move.
Thank you. Second, second from Jim, thank you. So we have the minutes of August 23rd, we have warrants, and we have two liquor licenses. One is the new liquor license for the W Collective, which is in our packet, and the other is a renewal for Miller's Toll, which was emailed to us late this afternoon, and some of us saw it and some of us didn't, but it's a renewal for Miller's Toll. Any questions for Stu, or any questions on the minutes for Nancy? I have just one on the minutes. I think in the present, it's DeB-, it's M A T T E rather than M A N N, I believe. Who was that? What was that? Just also present. DeB's last name is Matt? Jean, okay. All right, so, any other questions? Any comments? No? All right, so then, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? All right, great. So next up is Dr. Trey Dobson to give us a COVID update, which we are looking forward to. Yes, please, please.
Okay. So I just have, let's see, I just have a few things, and then maybe you can have some dialogue if you have particular questions. So I'll just start out with the prevalence of the virus. Let me just give you the summary. I think everyone knows it's highly prevalent. In other words, there are a lot of cases, meaning that there is community transmission of the virus. You know, we've been pretty fortunate that we haven't had a lot of community transmission. In other words, just transmitting throughout the community. It's usually people in the past that have traveled and come and brought it back, but now it is actually circulating in our community. And it still is predominantly circulating among unvaccinated people, and a lot of that happens to be children under the age of 12. So greater than 50% of these cases are coming from that age group. I'm going to give some numbers, and in the end, they're very important, and then they're not important. They just go back to the fact that it's highly prevalent. Our percent positivity testing-wise in the state is around 3.5% to 4%. We want that to be around 1%. If it's around 1%, it means we're testing enough. If it's up to 4%, we're not testing enough, meaning that there are cases we're not catching out there. Now, we are testing enough, but it's getting people, you know, to come to the testing. The second is, some good news is the numbers of cases are somewhat flat over the past 14 days. That's a lot better than increasing. Hospitalizations, however, are increasing, and that tends to be the trend. Cases kind of died down, but hospitalizations continue for another couple of weeks. Right now, we're in the mid-30s in the state, and our high in the past, back in, you know, January of this year, was in the mid-60s. So that's where we're sort of aiming towards. Now, there's a big difference when we think about the burden on the healthcare system. Back when we were in the mid-60s, we actually weren't doing much else except taking care of COVID patients, and lots of surgeries and things were being deferred. Now, that's not the case, so all the staff is trying to do both. Take care of COVID patients around the state, as well as keep the ORs open, keep the, it's operating rooms open, keeping the floors open. There are many places in the country, and I know everyone's aware, but I'm just trying to standardize here, where, in fact, where my father still practices medicine, no surgeries are occurring, you know, nothing that's elective can occur because everyone's taking care of COVID patients. We are not in that situation. The modeling does not suggest we will get there, however, the modeling does suggest we'll continue to go up through the month of October. So if it did rise any beyond October, we may be in a position around the state to have to curtail some of the hospital elective-type procedures. By the way, the reason I keep using the state and not Bennington is it's hard to parse out data, but also, we are so small as a state, and we are so small as a region, that what I say today may not be reflective two weeks from now, and then it may be reflective three weeks from now. It's just small numbers, so it's better to talk about the aggregate of the state. If you are curious, we've been averaging around five to seven COVID patients in our hospital at SVMC over the past couple of weeks, per day. Now, I'm just going to kind of shift a little bit and talk about what we're seeing, what you're reading in the media about infections and vaccinated versus unvaccinated, because that's always a very interesting topic, and it is really interesting. Let me give you, so now we've got a lot of good data from lots of places around the country, and we can really say that this data is correct. Back in the early spring, when the original Alpha variant was going around, wasn't a variant, it was the actual original SARS, we were seeing about 10 times the rate of infection in unvaccinated versus vaccinated. That has declined now to about five times. So for every one person who's vaccinated and tests positive or has mild symptoms, five unvaccinated people have. And you might think, well, that means that the vaccine is wearing off. It actually doesn't mean that necessarily at all. There's so many variables. First off, way more people are vaccinated today than they were back in February, when that original data came out. In fact, the only people that were vaccinated in February were mostly healthcare workers. So you expect those numbers to change like that. And then, of course, there is the new virus. It replicates so much faster that it's likely that it gets into a vaccinated person, replicates, gives them a little bit of symptoms, they test positive before their body can get on top of it, whereas the previous virus didn't replicate so fast, so you really wouldn't know you had it at the time. And then, the numbers of people that are vaccinated compared to unvaccinated that are hospitalized, so it's about 10 times the number that are unvaccinated or hospitalized, and about 10 or 11 times the number that die. Of the people that do get hospitalized or die that are vaccinated, most, you know, greater than 66%, are above the age of 75. Now, I just threw a lot of things out at you, so let me just tell you what it means. It means the vaccine continues to work extremely well. It means that vaccinated people can get COVID, they can pass COVID, just not at near the rate that unvaccinated people can. It means that if you are unvaccinated, you are more likely to get much sicker. It means that if you are vaccinated and you're older or have other immunocompromised conditions, that you still may end up in the hospital. Vaccine is the answer for us to get out of this pandemic, and as soon as we can get the children vaccinated, our numbers will go down significantly, and we can go towards an endemic state, where potentially we can do things like have this meeting without masks on, which would be very nice. Also, we can keep our kids in school, which will be very nice. Let me move to the schools and say what's going on. This is really up to date. I'm talking about the last four days, five days. We have positive cases in almost every school system in our region. I think people probably know that by now. It kind of really came to fruition early last week, and then by the end of the week. It does, still does not appear at all that the cases are transmitting in school at any discernible rate. These seem to be community transmissions, so from home or from activities outside of school. So the things that are going on in school to prevent the transmission is working fairly well. I will say it's very hard to do. Our educators are, boy, they are working so hard. I talked to several over the weekend, they were in their offices working. This is staff, this is leaders, and it's not really sustainable to continue with that. So the state is trying to help by bringing testing into the schools, which will, which will be help, helpful with surveillance testing. And then, again, it's possible that in about, you know, less than 60 days, we are on a big vaccination effort for the 5 to 11-year-olds, and that will help tremendously as well. There's also another group that you know about, and it's just, it's amazing how controversial this has become in the past few weeks, but that's booster shots. So that is an additional shot for people that received two doses of an mRNA vaccine, in other words, a Pfizer or a Moderna vaccine. If you would have asked me three weeks ago, I would have said, this is definitely occurring around September 20th, maybe September 27th, and SVMC is geared up to do this, so are some of the pharmacies and other places. But there has been a lot of controversy about whether or not these boosters, if our resources should be devoted towards giving these boosters right now. And again, today, a paper came out that was authored by some FDA employees, as well as some others, arguing against doing this right now. I don't know where it's going to go. We're moving forward, the state's moving forward, as if it will be permitted and authorized by the FDA, and it will be giving boosters as early as next week. It is likely that if it does go through, the state will ask that we do it in a phased approach with, starting at those above 75, and then do it in an age-band way. It actually makes complete sense. We really wouldn't even have to say that, because there's this eight-month gap, and most people who are 40 didn't get the vaccine within the past eight months. They got it five months ago. So it really is that older age band, and it should work out, it should work out really smoothly if it goes forward. We'll know more on Friday and Saturday of this week. Let's see here. And then, I'm just going to talk about one more thing real quick, because I get this question all the time, and that's just risk. And what do we do if we're vaccinated? How do we interact? Should we stay in our houses now because vaccinated people get the, can get the virus? The answer is no, it's really not. Although vaccinated people can test positive and can develop symptoms, and like I said, some can even go in the hospital, the risk is still way, way low compared to unvaccinated. And if you are extremely risk adverse, or if you have an immunocompromised condition, yes, you must avoid the public right now, because the virus prevalence is so high. But that prevalence is going to come down. And when it does, even people who are immunocompromised are going to be able to get out. They may not decide to go to crowded venues for a couple of years, but those that are vaccinated and not immunocompromised, it is very, very possible that, you know, even late 2021, but early 2022, we're back into a position where the virus has become endemic, and we can continue on, and there will be some risk, just like there are risks when I leave here and I drive home. So I'll stop there, and if you have any questions now, or you can always contact me with questions later.
So questions from the Select Board? Yes.
Thank you, Jim. Just about everything that I had a question about what you mentioned, the new variants, are you referring to Delta, or is it Mu or MU?
Yeah. Well, that's a good question. I don't remember exactly what I was saying there, but I'll just tell you, all variants, you know, we follow variants. The reason that the Mu variant is so in the media is because that's what they want to report on today. None of that really matters, Jim, until it gets to a point where the, where a variant, so let's say the Mu, is found to be, have an advantage over other variants, and therefore going to predominate. So if, let's just say the virus was, became really deadly, it would have zero advantage, and it would not, it would not go through community, right? Because it would just, it would take people out too fast. That's what happened with SARS-1. SARS-1 was so deadly, it couldn't survive, because it just took, took out everyone. Delta appears to be this virus that replicates so fast, that's its advantage, and Mu is not looking like it's going to be that way, but we'll still follow it. And I will also say variants are very scary, but if that's how viruses worked, pandemics would have taken out the human race a long time ago. So they get to a certain point, and then it becomes not so advantageous for them to take people out, and then we get them under control.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trey. I have two questions. One is, I have to get tested quite often for my job. What should, when should people choose to get tested? Let's just say, you know, when they get home from traveling, when they've been doing something high-risk? Just give people a sense of when they really should go get tested.
Yeah, that's a great question. And actually, you reminded me of a few things I want to talk about testing. So first off, it does matter if you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. So a vaccinated individual needs to test in the following, for the following reasons. It's not good to do just surveillance testing in vaccinated people. The reason is, is you start approaching, first off, it takes resources to test. Second, the value added is low. And third, your false positive rate starts approaching your true positive rate in a vaccinated person who just wants to test for surveillance. Now, someone might say, yeah, but at my college, my kid is vaccinated, and they're doing surveillance testing. Totally different story. College kids do not follow rules, everybody knows that. They go out, they hang out with unvaccinated people, so it's appropriate. It's not even really surveillance, it's almost like testing for exposure. So if, Jean, if you were traveling, and you traveled to an endemic area, sorry, a pandemic area, an area with high prevalence of the virus, just like we are now, it's very reasonable to test, to come back and do it. You just, you want to have a reason beyond the fact that I'm worried and anxious today. That's when your false positives start approaching true positives.
And my other question is, what's your advice about when we should all be getting our, just the regular flu shot?
Oh, great. So you should get the regular flu shot as soon as it's available, and you can go get it. I will tell you that if boosters do move forward next week, like we think we are, they are, we at SVMC are going to be administering both at the same time. We're going to encourage people to get them both at the same time, it's very safe, one trip, therefore, you're, you know, you get the, you get both vaccines. If you're not getting a booster for some reason, or you don't want it, and that's fine, just get the flu shot now is fine. You know, we always wait, say, wait till as late as possible. This year, that's about now.
Thanks. Yes, Garrett?
I have just, just a couple of questions. You said that we have five to seven people coming to the hospital or being admitted every day, and we have mid-30s, is that throughout the state?
Right, so let me clarify, five to seven hospital censuses per day, knowing that some of those people are going to be there for four or five days. So we're not admitting five a day. That's just the daily census.
All right.
Yeah. So SVMC's high point was 25 back in January, daily census, and the highest I've seen it in the past two weeks, maybe eight at one point. I think it was five this morning when I looked. The state is at 38.
Yeah, I was just wondering if Bennington had a high percentage of the cases throughout the state?
You know, it doesn't seem to. There are, you know, 15 hospitals in the state, half of those are, are critical access hospitals, where they wouldn't admit a COVID patient, so now you just cut it to half. You have seven of them. UVM gets the predominant number. It, you know, on a given day, Bennington may be high, the next, the next week, it may be Chittenden County, and it seems that the whole state's red right now.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from the board? No? Any questions from the audience? Any public questions? No? All right, well, that was sobering, 2022. That was a very sobering number to hear. But this is great information. Thank you, thank you so much.
Absolutely. See you guys.
Coming. We'll see you soon.
Thanks, Trey.
All right, so let's move on to public comment. So there is, there is information at the podium, yes, Stu, about the rules for public comment, yes?
Yes.
But the purpose of public comment is to allow residents an opportunity to share information or make announcements that benefit the community at large. Topics should not be related to an agenda item. Try and keep your comments to three minutes or less, and the only exception to that is organizations coming up to share information. You are required to state your name and town of residence, and please share comments, announcements, and concerns, rather than asking questions. If you have questions, we are happy to take those up outside of the meeting and then report back. So with that, Dara Zink.
And there are cleaning supplies on the floor there?
You may want to use them.
Wanted to wipe the microphone or anything?
Yes, thank you for saying that.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
My voice carries. Don't even need to be near the microphone.
Well, it's also for CAT TV. Yes.
Thank you for having us here this evening. I am Dara Zink. I am the Board President of Project Against Violent Encounters, what we call PAVE, and I just would love to introduce you to our new Executive Director. This is Lindsay Brilliant.
Hello.
Lindsay comes to us from her work as Clinical Insight Supervisor at the Keenan House for Women in Pittsfield, Mass., where she supervised the Residential Addiction Treatment Program for women in the early stages of recovery. She also has extensive experience working with families as part of Berkshire Children and Families. So we are very excited to have her expertise and leadership at the helm of our organization as we celebrate our 40th year of offering services to domestic and sexual violence victims and survivors. So our organization has been part of Bennington County for longer than I have been alive. Not long, but longer. We've been a cornerstone agency, and we're excited to continue our work to serve our community. As part of our celebration, we are holding a 40th Anniversary Fundraiser. It's a raffle, and there are some exceptional prizes. There's a $250 gift certificate to Madison, we have a case of wine, and a gift certificate to Allegro's. If you like to golf, you can get 18 holes of golf at the Mount Anthony Country Club, and two chances at $500 cash, just to name a few. If you're curious more about that, you can go to pavebennington.org, and you can purchase tickets there if you would like. Your donation goes towards keeping our 24-hour and seven-day-a-week hotline running, and it ensures that we can continue to offer emergency shelter to those fleeing domestic and sexual violence. It also allows us to continue providing supervised visitations through our Family Time Center, and allows PAVE to assist when needed at the Emergency Department at SVMC. Our services are as varied as our clients' needs. No two stories are the same, so our services vary as to everybody's needs, and we connect them to other agencies in our community. We are looking forward to continuing our work and are thankful for our community's support and the support of the Select Board as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So the, we, when do we need to purchase our tickets by, for the raffle?
September 27th.
Okay, so we need to get on it?
Get on it.
Okay, we got, okay.
Do it now.
We've got two weeks.
You can, you can purchase tickets through a PAVE board or a staff member. I do have tickets with me tonight, if you would like. And, but you can go online and purchase them that way as well. So we will be drawing on October 1st. That will be announced on our website and on our social media as well.
How much are the tickets?
They are $50 apiece.
Excellent. All right. Any other questions? Yeah? That's fantastic. You guys do wonderful, wonderful work.
Thank you.
We are so happy and proud to have you in our community.
We don't want to be around for 40 more years, but if our services are needed, we are happy to continue doing our work and just staying a cornerstone of our, of our county. We're the only one in the entire county.
Wow. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Nancy White.
Hi, Nancy White, Bennington. I have three issues I'm asking that you place on the next agenda. The first would be the Ben High Project. By the end of last year, you should have invited the owner in here to give us a public discussion and information about what the plans for that building and the parking lot are. We haven't even heard what the price tag on it is. I'm very concerned that you're expecting parts of our town budget to permanently subsidize that building for the rest of our lives. When that was the junior high and the middle school, every town had to pay out of their school budget to fund the kids that went there. The other schools aren't going to be paying now, and I think it's unfair that the taxpayers are going to watch parts of our recreation budget have to go to that building. Our money should be staying at the Recreation Center. So I'd like to have the owner or somebody come in who can answer questions from the public, and at least know what the price tag on the project is going to be. Second is the Senior Center. I've been trying to get answers about the Senior Center for a year. I've called into meetings, both Rose and I put letters in the paper, nobody will speak. I think during COVID is the last time that you should think about our local seniors being put with people of different ages, from many different towns over at the Ben High Building. There's practically no parking. I heard that Stu is going to be meeting with the seniors at the Senior Center. While some of us are working, we can't go. There are seniors who may not want to go to the meeting. If you have 40 people, they can't socially distance. I really think meetings at the Senior Center need to end, and they need to be at the Select Board meeting. I think November is too late for the discussion. And Jeannie, I heard you say at the last meeting, it's up to Bennington to provide services for seniors in the county. That is not our responsibility. The other towns will take care of the citizens in their town. We have to focus on keeping our money in Bennington. Last, the Recreation Center. Very disappointing to look at all of that fencing on the property. I think that, I didn't ever hear a public discussion. I read an article in the Banner last year about Shannon and hikers talking about what they wanted to do. I never heard where the public was invited to join a committee to talk about what we wanted to do. We've waited for the gym for 40 years. With all of that fencing, you can't extend the parking lot. And I want you to talk about this idea that you want total strangers from around the country to show up in Bennington and be able to use the locker rooms and the showers. No school would allow that. It isn't safe for the kids. And if you want to do that, I don't understand why you can't do it at the Ben High. So I think you need to discuss this with the public. I think when people find out, they're going to be upset. So I'm hoping you will get something on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, W Collective?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us.
Yes, good evening. My name is Derek Finsky.
And I'm Brianna Magnifico.
We are both the co-owners of W Collective. It's a new retail space and cafe located at 332 Main Street, right across from the new and exciting Putnam Project, and we've been open for two months now. So we're here tonight just to inform everyone of what the purpose of our store is, and also some of the programming and partnerships that we've been able to accomplish in the last two months.
Well, yeah, so we're, I'm a little nervous. So what we're trying to do is, you know, build the arts scene in the community and sort of bring everybody together. It's sort of both of our passions. We're both very involved in the arts and events, and we're both very passionate about Bennington and the culture. So really, what we're trying to do is build a bridge between, you know, the community and the arts and Bennington College, and we want to sort of build on that.
Yeah, the store is aimed at highlighting and promoting women plus vendors, makers. That was, the goal was to be able to provide an accessible space to share with other vendors, and to be there to support them and advocate for them. And as Bree mentioned, we've been working with lots of different community-based businesses and organizations. Probably one of our most notable has been with Bennington College through their Kappa Program, and being able to provide student artists the ability to, for a month, showcase their artwork, either to sell it or have, host an open gallery evening, to invite the community, and then to also invite their peers to come and see them. So we're working really hard to sort of create, or not, not create, but also just kind of foster and help grow the art scene here in Bennington. So our store is open Thursday through Sunday currently, Thursday through Saturday from 11, from 10 to 6, and Sundays from 10 to 5.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Just, we're happy you're here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just love the store, that's all.
Thank you so much.
So great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, our last person for public comment tonight is Sarah Perrin.
I'm just going to jump over to the citizen's side here and announce the Bennington Food Truck Fest. It's this Saturday, the 18th, 11 till 6. We're going to have music. There's a beer garden, the heart lot. Come hungry, come early, stay late, and this year, please bring your chairs. There's not going to be a tent to sit under, because we're going to try to social distance. We're encouraging everyone to wear masks, and when you're eating, take them off. Eat, eat a lot, and have a great time. The weather's looking great. So see you all there.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Wonderful.[1796.11] Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. All right, so let's move on to community policing. So Bruce, first up is code of conduct, second reading, and then Jeanne has some updates, right?
Okay, so if you have that in front of you, I, I can honestly tell you I have no idea how this happened, but some of the changes that I made didn't make it into the document that I sent to Beth. So you should have a copy there somewhere, and I'm going to go through and make the changes that were on mind, and then hopefully this will make sense. Right at the top, under related policies, you should strike response to resistance and duty to intervene and add fair and impartial policing. That's on page one.
Bruce, we were signing the warrants and stuff, but what did you say? I missed it.
Sorry.
That's okay. It's not your fault.
The, so you should strike up in, under related policies at the very top under line, between line three and four, response to resistance, because that's where we now just have use of force policy that we have adopted. Strike duty to intervene and add fair and impartial policing. Then we go to, you will notice on page four, on line 15, it became, this one was saved, Vermont Center for Independent Living, so that's a change.
Can, what, what line?
Uh, well, it's the only one that's blue, line 15.
Okay.
So the changes were supposed to be, anything that was changed for today would have been Let me go to li, uh, page five of six, line 23. It should say K, not H. K is the letter that comes after J. Don't know how that happened, unless Microsoft is thinking there's a new alphabet. Who knows? Anyway, that was added at the request of a number of, some community members. This language comes directly from the IACP, International Association of Chiefs of Police Model Policy, which we were, the committee was using a great deal in its, uh, in its work to construct this policy. And you will note that the bottom that it, that it cites, or at least refers to unbiased and, unbiased, fair and impartial manner, and, and so asks us to see the fair and impartial policing policy. That's why that was added. There's a couple more. Hang on. Here we go. On, on page five, line four, I think it is, or yes. It, oh, it does say BPD.
No, it says BOD.
No, it says BOD. BOD. It should say BPD. It says it on my copy. That's why I don't understand, it didn't get over to the other. And, um, and it should also, on line 14, there we go, line 14, it should say maintaining ING.
Yes.
Not maintain. Those were changes that came from our discussion three weeks ago, and why they didn't get there is a mystery to me. So I'm open to your, well, I, I will move this as, as a draft, or as a, as a, after the second reading, if I need to.
Yeah, yeah. Do we want to, do you want to make a, well, make a motion? We can second it and then we can have discussion?
Sure.
You want to do that?
I, yeah, that, that's what I would think. I would move its adoption as it has now been corrected.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it. Oh, nevermind.
Okay, all right. So any discussion? I, I do, I have a concern with the second bullet under the new K, which was H. I, uh, it seems to me, well, I don't know. It seems to me that saying that members shall treat individuals with courtesy, respect, and dignity is really what we're after. I think the second bullet is giving examples of what not to do, right? What, what would not be respectful, courteous, or showing dignity to another human being. I'm just wondering, I don't know, it, the second bullet really bothers me. It does. I just find it, um, I find it unnecessary, but I would love to hear other people's thoughts on that.
Let me suggest at least what, an argument that I have heard, and that is, it's, I, I would agree with you. I think the first bullet does talk in the positive sense. I actually had a conversation not long ago with a member of the community, and it was precisely on this, in this area of language that was used toward them and to somebody else. And it's, in some sense, though I understand this language to be subjective and difficult, it will be difficult to, to enforce and probably duplicative, I would, I would agree with you. It's easier for somebody to understand what officious and overbearing and belittling and ridiculing language is when they experience it than it is for them to, this is the argument anyway, than it is for them to, to recognize the lack of the positive. I know that's a convoluted argument. I get it.
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I do get that argument. I'm just, I, I just find it offensive, I guess.
You find it offensive?
Yeah, I, I don't know. It feels, it feels unnecessary and therefore in some ways offensive, but I am, but I'm interested what other people, if anyone, I mean, if I'm the only person that is not finding this language okay, then I'm fine to, to leave it in. I just wanted to raise the concern.
What, what bothers me about it, and, and I certainly understand the sentiment and don't have a problem with that, it's assuming that that's what the police officer would do.
No, I, I guess that I will disagree with. I don't think it is assuming that that's, it's not assuming either. It's, it is not assuming either only respectful language or ridiculing language. It, it is giving a, both a positive and a negative example. And so I don't think it's assuming one or the other. It's neither assuming always positive language and it's not, and it's not assuming always belittling language. It's trying to describe what experience has been. And we can keep it in or take it out, but...
Is this something that could be addressed in procedures rather than the policy in some way that may be more palatable for Jeanne? And while I have the floor, the, the word in line 32 should be T-R-U-S-T, just, just a quick little...
Is there a, oh, you're right.
Rest. So anyway, that would be my suggestion.
That's an interesting one. Would it, could we, would it be more appropriate in procedure because it is...
If it was addressed in procedure, we haven't seen procedures, so we don't know how they're going to be addressed. That's my dilemma about saying, let's just put it in procedure. Because, I mean, do I think it would be? I hope so.
Well, I think let's make the assumption that what should be in procedure will be in procedure. I'm just, so I think the question for me is, is it more appropriate in procedure than in policy? If policy's trying to give us the, the broad stroke. But, you know, I, Sarah, Jim, Gary, Tom, do you have any thoughts about this?
Having not seen any procedures yet, I don't think we can assume anything.
But we, you're, you're the ones who approve them.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I know, but, but, I just, I just, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding why there's any objection at all. I guess I'm just not, maybe I'm not understanding you.
Okay, so it's not bothering you?
It's not, I, I really don't get it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I, I would move to this, move to this adoption as well. I would not do, I would not assume anything at this point.
Okay, all right. All right, so any other, any other questions, comments? No? Okay, so we ready to vote? All those in favor of the code of conduct policy with the corrections and the corrections that have been noted, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? All right. Yay. We're through this packet, the second packet, yes?
Yes.
Excellent.
That's all there are.
Okay.
And I did thank all those people at the last meeting, so I'm hoping that that's, and I didn't write it down again. Sorry.
And so that would be thanking Lon McClintock, Carol Lusa, John Dyke, and Kate Canning. Yes?
Lynn Mazza was on.
That's not true. That's the wrong...
That's not, that's not the correct group.
Never mind. That is the wrong policy.
That would be the wrong list. It would be Lynn Mazza, Beth Sossville, Peter Lawrence, and Lauren Wilcox.
Better list. Thank you. Okay.
I knew that was the, yeah.
Good. Okay.
Not to mention Dan and Dan Farrar, Dan Monks and Dan Farrar.
Excellent. All right. So Jeanne, I'm going to turn it over to you for other updates.
Yep, just really quickly, we were just talking about procedure, and there are seven sets of procedures that are this close to being ready for us to, that will come before us. There's, they're working on just the last bit of language on those procedures, so it's not clear when we'll see those, but it will be very, very soon. Maybe possibly the next meeting? Possibly. Great. And just to update the community, the interview process for the task force members, or candidates, began last week, and we will finish those this week. We have two interview sessions this week, and the intention is to appoint the task force by September 20th.
Excellent. We're all set?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay. All right, so on to the next item, which should be a quick one. Infrastructure and Economic Development Strategy Subcommittee. So to assist White and Burke in the work that they are doing, if you recall, Dan Monks gave an excellent overview, I don't know, maybe last month, explaining how White and Burke would be helping us, and Select Board voted to hire them to help us in both assessing infrastructure and economic development needs in the community and also looking at a range of funding streams so that we could make the best use of the federal ARPA money that's coming down, as well as just look at how advan, how to advance the things that we want to get done. Last week, we wanted Select Board involvement in that, and Dan has suggested a subcommittee. We learned last week that White and Burke were very interested in hearing sort of our initial list of what, of what projects might be out there. And so we decided to do a subcommittee with Gary, who's been working on the Energizer re-imagination, so been doing a lot of infrastructure and economic development work on that, and Jeanne and I, who have been attending the economic development meetings with BRC and BBC, to be part of, part of this work. We're going to be a very, very short-lived infrastructure and economic development group because the whole thing is going to be finished by the end of December, I believe, all of White and Burke's work. And so we did put together an initial list along with, I think, all the departments in the town submitted list, BRC submitted a list, BBC submitted a list, and all of that's being compiled into one big sort of, here are the projects that people have been talking about or have been wishing to have, you know, underway. Everything from sidewalks to Willow Park to Energizer to Putnam to, you know, you name it, Ben High. So a lot of different, a lot of different projects. We should know more the next, by the next meeting, I think, because White and Burke will be able to give us a better sense of, of their timeline and what, how they're planning to proceed. And the public and the full Select Board will be brought into this very quickly. So, you know, as you know, because we cannot, open meeting law has, has both its good and, and difficult pieces, and one of those is that it's hard to get work done if it all has to be done with the full Select Board and the BBC and the BRC sitting in a room. So, so that is all I have to say about that, but just know that there'll be plenty of time for the public to be fully involved in this as well as the full Select Board. So with that, managers report?
Just one more question, one minute, the updates, you know, including...
Sure.
Did you say that the appointments would be made by September 20th?
That the week of September 20th, which is next, yeah. And then the, because the orientation happens the following, the criminal justice...
Special meeting.
Mm-hmm. Yes, there's three days of, of criminal justice training that following week. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
I have one act I have for you to see, and that is the DSACP Vermont Department of Police, I plan to, it will occur on September 20th, I believe, and October 4th, 34th. The meetings that we would need to appoint a delegate to, or the annual meetings of the DSACP, which is current time, is the property casualty insurance fund and the Vermont Police Trust, the, I mean, liability trust that is self-funded through the communities that belong to the league. Normally, I have been appointed a delegate by this board, and then those meetings involve whatever policy issues or dog issues are drawn forward. I plan to attend this year by Zoom, being in fact, in South Burlington, but there are often new options, so I plan to be assumed. And at this time, I do not intend to travel to show Vermont to attend the rest of the meetings, like, I go with 34th, that's a long way to go. And I think that's...
All right.
I need a, a motion.
Do I hear that motion?
I second.
Second?
Second.
Great. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? Okay, great. Congratulations.
Such, such as it is.
I'm interested in other information and knowledge that can be asked that I can include this. But very fortunate enough, we recently hired four new police officers. We were down to actually six divisions. The four, at this point, are in the state of Connecticut, there are four that's taken in Macau, Ryan, and Brandon Humbley, and they are already in that training, having a double one certification, starting, they'll come back for a time, and then October, the full way, so the 16 police academy training. Hopefully, if they are successful, they will be able to control without supervision sometime in April, or 2022. So we're happy that that's happening. Interviews have been conducted recently for district positions, which are not dealing open. So we are gonna hire a little bit of finishing PD, and we do have decisions for this, so we encourage anyone who's out there, to take a look at the PD website, and if there isn't a certain, a police officer or district, we can add a greater application.
Stu, are any of these new officers natives of Bennet? Are any of these new officers natives of Bennet?
They didn't, no. No, they all come from elsewhere.
Thanks, just curious.
And then the last piece is, he, I think, is beginning to be, the first of a park cleanup that I've highlighted, it's called the 75th cleanup, EPA designation, what they're calling it. This is a former landfill that practically belonged back in, I'm gonna say, the 40s to early 60s. It exists just off of Chapel Road. It's visible from the highway. The town was named as a potentially responsible party, he said, there is a old furnace, broke the road, tried to, ran up through this property, between what is now, the road, in fact, the grand street, and all the way to Chapel Road. And the state of Long Beach being a, a, a party, because they purchased all of this land, so when EPA are looking for people who might fund the project, if they, and the state of Long Beach is looking for detrans, to transportation, right there, we are practically finished. I think there's some additional, not so, we fly this week, and then it's seeding, and then we lay down a, a road control bag, prevent everything from washing into the drains. I have to tell you that we have two employees who certify, level one certified certifications for EPA to work. It's a patent-aid certification. We certify an initial four members, from the 40 hour online course, and that gave us sufficient members in our first course to, to assist in the cleanup, and I have to tell you that it, it can't be doubt. And EPA has definitely decided to replace, and is currently satisfied, and will continue to get that site certified, as completed according to plan and all the books, as seen as practical. One of the problems with this is it took employees off to, in order to do this project. All of the costs, except that our costs, we, ready ourselves, train ourselves, have been paid for permanently, so we did the work, they take off. So it's gonna, it's gonna, it's a beautiful project to get to, but it's a practical thing to do.
Well, and I hope, from the full select board and the community, that they know how thankful we are and how much we appreciate the amount of work they've done. It's been excellent. Yeah.
And that's pretty all I have.
Okay. All right. So upcoming agendas, to the point earlier, we, this afternoon, the YMCA contacted us asking if they could give an update on their programming at the next meeting, so that will happen. We did a month ago have a program that, where we looked at senior, senior programming specifically, but this will be overall programming that the Y is doing. Any, anything else we know about for the agenda?
I have to talk about Ted.
I don't think so.
The answer did ask in several things, you placed out of your business. I certainly glad our country knows about senior Sarah, and what potentially you're looking at when it comes to the Ben High property. I'm not going to give you a tour of what the Ben High property is, that is a private thing, running project, is, we are just looking at, we see space potentially, in partnerships with some other agencies who also serve intergenerational, both such as seniors and younger adults. So I'll have a brief report.
Okay.
I couldn't know anything. Is there something else to do on Thursday?
We can have the Y talk about how they see using the green space, which was never gonna be a parking lot as far as I know, knew, but the green space that is being fenced off so that it's safe for children to play in, that can be part of, I mean, the Y can address that when they're, when they're here, right? Okay. Let's see. Yeah, you can, you can raise that. Jeanne, I, I think, are you, are you thinking maybe, should, when I introduce him?
No, I think it's Stu should, not me.
Yeah.
The hiring of the communications person.
Oh, yes, thank you. We did, we pressed the reason, there was a nice story in there. Has Joe Smith did that? Partner in the ownership of the office house, and the owner, right, who's on, has been hired to work with the town, as a communications coordinator. Joe will start with this, on September 20th, Monday. We're looking forward to harnessing his energy. He's already given a list of things he wants to accomplish in the first 10 days, which is longer than most lists I work with. So this is, this is a young man who comes to us with a lot of energy, is committed to improving our communication with the community, and in a sense, showing that this was a very worthwhile hire. We're looking forward to Joe joining us. He will be, he'll be in the department, so when you look for line item expenditures, that's where you'll see what most of what Joe needs to be, and he will urgently share an office space with Shannon on the third floor, or the top offices.
Jeanne, Jeanne, were you suggesting that he come? Or...
No, I was just, no.
Oh, just this?
Exactly what Stu's saying.
Oh, exactly. Okay. Perfect. Okay. He's hired? Let's move. That's great.
You know, I would think that's a good comment.
Great. Great. Well, we look forward to hearing from him when he's ready to, to share. Other business. Bruce, any?
Nothing.
Sarah?
I have one.
Okay, Jim? Jeanne? Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah. First, I wanted to commend everyone that was involved in Garlic Town last weekend, because it was spectacular. That was my first opportunity to volunteer, and I'll do it again. And I also have some news from the Bennington Free Library's children's room. Dragon activity bags are now available. Kids will get up these bags. They have five eggs inside with riddles in them, and they must solve the riddles and return their answer sheet, and they can win a Folkman's baby dragon puppet and a shimmering dragon egg.
That's great.
And the bags will also include materials to decorate the eggs and to sculpt their own baby dragon. Also, there is a dragon puppet workshop that there are still openings for on September 18th, that's a Saturday, at 10:30. To register, call the library 442-9051, or email children@bfli.org. And finally, on Thursday, the 16th, at 1:30 PM, Museum ABCs for preschoolers and their grownups at the George Aiken Wildflower Trail at the Bennington Museum. Museum ABCs is a collaboration between the Bennington Free Library and the Bennington Museum.
Excellent.
Get your kids.
Yay. Gary?
No.
No? Well, I do, I wanna thank the town and the police department for the really moving tribute It was the, everything from the MAU choir singing to the comments, to the laying of the wreaths, to the lowering of the flag, which was done with incredible care, was just wonderful. So very much thanks to both the police department and, and the town in general for that work.
I think most of the credit there goes to Chief Dusset and Lieutenant Grandy. They were the, they were the backbone behind that.
It was great. All right. All right. So if we have nothing else in other business, we have a need for executive session to discuss a contract matter, and we will not be making a decision coming out of, out of executive session.
Can I clarify one of my questions?
Yes.
As far as the rec center goes outside, before UCS ever broke ground, they cut back on the amount of parking they provided, and I raised concerns there wasn't gonna be enough parking. I didn't mean that you were gonna put parking up where you have it fenced in, but we're gonna need to expand the parking because you don't have enough.
Okay, so we'll...
You can't go to, well, wait a minute, Jeanne.
Okay.
You never gave UCS approval to use the land on the right-hand side of the parking lot. They've ruined it. There's a huge drainage ditch that runs to Gage Street that none of you have talked about. If you need to extend the parking lot to the left, you have all that fencing there.
All right.
But that wasn't the issue I wanted raised. I want you to discuss how you're going to make sure the strangers passing through town going to use the locker rooms and the showers, how it's gonna be safe for the kids up there.
Nancy, as, we can, we can discuss, we'll discuss this offline, but I already emailed you about that. This is not, AT users have always been able to come in and use the showers. You know, so...
Well, I hope you read about the issue that two women had up in Killington, with a hiker who sounded like he was pretty much crazy. I hope the guy doesn't show up in Bennington and you let him into the rec center.
Okay.
Again, let them go to the, let them go to the Ben High.
Nancy, so you clarified your question, yes?
All right, but the rec center is not a YMCA facility. The Y does not pay a dollar to be there. You have to stop using that building like a YMCA.
All right. Thank you. I think you clarified. All right. So do I have a motion to go into executive session? And we'll say goodnight to everyone. Thanks for being here, and we will see you in probably two weeks. Yes?
Second.
All right. So moves, second. All in favor of executive session?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So goodnight. We'll take five.
Sure.